Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 2nd Planning Board meeting. This is the advertised place and the advertised time. Please join me in stand for the pleasure of the leaders.
What do leaders...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairwoman Gwoski will not be here tonight. She's been selected as the Grand Marshal for the Jamesburg Parade and they have a community fundraiser tonight. But we do have a quorum, so we're going to continue with the people's business. First up is a public hearing for RH Hamptons LLC. Matt, can you let us know what's going on, please?
Absolutely. Matt Charter's Planner for the Town of Riverhead. This is a public hearing for the subdivision application in title RH Hamptons LLC, which seeks approval to subdivide a 28,741 square foot vacant parcel into five lots with frontage on Union Avenue and Maple Avenue. This is just to the north of the Long Island Railroad and is located within the downtown Center 5 Residential, which is DC 5 zoning use district at 308-310 Maple Avenue, Riverhead. More particularly identified as Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-129...
Matt, is that mic on? We can't, really can't hear you.
No? How about that? No matter what I do with this thing, it never picks me up. Suffolk County Task Map Number 600-129-2-46.1. Just briefly, as you can see, the subdivision map is pretty straightforward. It's in front of the board. As Member Bayer did point out at the last meeting, this map will have to comply with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, which in consultation with Jeff, at this time, looks like it will likely be payment in lieu of. So they will pay into the fund and then workforce housing would be provided elsewhere. Obviously, that would get finalized as part of our final approval for the subdivision. That's really out of my, it on my end, I'll turn it over to Charles Cuddy, who is the applicant's attorney.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening. Charles Cuddy for the applicant. Is this on so you can hear me?
Yes, I'm close.
Good. I will get, stay close. I represent the applicant. I have an office at 445 Griffin Avenue, Riverhead, New York. With me tonight, on behalf of the applicant, is Anthony Revatsis, who is one of the partners in RH Hamptons LLC, the owner. As Mr. Charter's pointed out, these are five lots in the DC 5 District, which allows 5,000 square foot lots. Each of these lots is in excess of 5,000 square feet. They meet all the dimensional requirements of DC 5. They have both water and sewer available on both streets. There are two lots that front on Maple Street, three lots that front on Union Avenue. And as indicated to you, because we have five, we have to arrange a affordable housing component, which we're certainly willing to do and have to do. I don't think there's a great deal more that can be said about them, because these are lots that are on public roads, so there's no roads required. Simply a subdivision of five dimensional lots that meet all the requirements.
Just one question. Is there fencing between those lots and the railroad?
No, I don't think there is.
Did you hear from the Highway Superintendent yet?
No, we have not. You were talking about the curbs?
Curbs and drainage.
The, we haven't gotten anything back, I know, from the Highway Superintendent. I guess the curbs are questionable in my mind, because will that cause water to flow down, downhill? Because this is not...
That would be up to you to decide with your engineer.
Okay, but...
How that would work.
Well, we, okay, we will be checking with them to see.
Also, is there a possibility we could get some common driveways?
I guess we could. We can work it out.
I know, you got five lots, so if one of them gets their own.
I understand. No, I don't think that's objectionable. Just a question of how it works out, yes.
Okay, anybody from the general public want to make a comment about this public It's a public hearing, so you're going to have to say your name and...
I'm Diane.
I know, but you have to go, because we're recording this for public record. Thank you. What's that?
First time.
Oh, welcome.
Hello, I'm Diane Kenny, and I'm just curious as to why they want to split these lots up and what do they want to do with each lot?
They're going to be residential homes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else in the public? How good we have any zoomers?
Um, we have zoomers, but no one is raising their hand right now.
Okay. Board members, any issues?
We can close the public hearing.
I think you say.
Somebody going to second it?
Oh, you both, I'll second it.
Moved him second, maybe we have a vote, please. Member Nenero.
Aye.
Member Bear.
Yes.
Member O'Day.
Yes.
And I will vote yes to closing the public hearing. Okay, we're going to move into discussion items. Popovich, Chapter 219 application, once again with Matt.
I don't know if I have Tom Kramer here. Notified, he's seen the report.
Puerto Rico.
I didn't have any objection that I know of. I'll go through this very briefly. I did distribute to the board a revised report just to include the town engineer's comments on this project, sorry, the town's consulting engineer. This is for Four Creek Road in Wading River, which is the very last house on Creek Road, right on the inlet. The application is to install 210 linear feet of rock armor on filter fabric. That's along the toe of the dune, and then they'll be covering the rock with 156 cubic yards of clean sand from an upland source, and then planting with beach grass. And then also, as part of this application, they'll be placing 1,800 cubic yards of clean upland fill on the Wading River Creek side of the property. As I said, Tom Kramer, landscape architect, did prepare, prepare plans for this application. It's about a 16,1,049 square foot parcel, RB 80 zoning at Four Creek Road. I did include some pictures within the staff report of kind of what's going on. Mr. Kramer did provide a pretty good detail about, you know, where all materials are being placed and what they're doing.
Was the application inhibit the public's use of the, you know, the surrounded beach?
I don't believe so. It's just, you know, the beach is accessed right at the end of the road, and, you know, mean high water is where...
Looks like he's trying to preserve his...
As much as you can. Into the creek, yeah. In terms of secret, this is unlisted. I'm recommending a night deck. DEC did issue a wetlands permit for this on December 20th, 2022. The town's consulting engineer took no objection to the proposed improvements. This application will need a Chapter 229 excavation and grading permit from the town board due to the amount of fill they're bringing to the property, so I have included that as a condition of approval.
Will it require a, will it require a monitor to see how much fill is actually going in?
I think the town board does require them. I don't know if, in something of this scope, they would, because it's a residence.
The town board, the town board can waive the requirement for a monitor. I mean, given that they provide proposed elevations, something like that's pretty easily verifiable. I think the monitor is in place to ensure that people don't try to illegally mine properties.
Yeah, I think it's...
For someone to, for someone to, for residential property, I'd, but the town board can...
DEC did approve, December 20th, issued a permit.
No jurisdiction, or they set, did they set the conditions?
They, no conditions. They issued a title wetlands permit, subject to the plans of ours. Anybody else?
Good, Dick?
I'm all right with it, man.
Gosh, good. Okay, let's move on to Delaney.
Thank you.
With Heather. 2878 North Wading River, Chapter 219.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Heather Chojnowski, site plan reviewer. Jeff Son was the architect and the person who submitted the application for this Chapter 219, but he couldn't be here tonight, so I will present it to the board. The planning department has received and reviewed a Chapter 219 application seeking to construct a beach access stairway and to relocate an existing deck landward of the top of the bluff. The subject parcel is located at 2870 North Wading River Road in Wading River, within the RB 80 zoning use district. Tax map number is 600-27-1-23.3, and it's a 1.655 acre parcel. It's Lot 3 of the Robert and Janice Tenant Minor Subdivision. The map is filed December 3rd, 1986, and it's accessed via flag driveway off of North Wading River Road. The proposed action is unlisted pursuant to SECRE, so according to review is optional and not recommended. I'm recommending that the planning board assume lead agency and issue a negative declaration, and I have a resolution on for that tonight. So as it exists, the site is presently improved with a two-story frame house, an attached garage, attached beerwood deck, and anger on pool with a deck and a 10 by 16 deck at the top of the bluff, and then existing wooden bulkhead in at the toe of the bluff. The proposed improvements include the beach access stairway. It's going to take access from that relocated deck that's going to be pushed landward at the top of the bluff. It'll be four feet wide by 144 feet long down the face of the bluff with three 4x6 landings, and would terminate seaward of the existing bulkhead with a set of stairs at the lowest landing. The applicant's also proposing to construct, or to install, a 12-inch tall vegetated berm landward of the crest of the bluff to, you know, obviously prevent any sort of stormwater runoff and prevent future erosion. New York State DEC did issue a title wetlands permit pursuant to Article 25, just for the relocation of that 10 by 16 deck and the beach access stairway. The proposed vegetated berm is actually outside of their jurisdiction, so they did note that it also includes the establishment of the vegetated berm, but it's not subject to the title wetlands permit. I did refer the application and plans over to the town's consulting engineer, and in a memo dated February 24th, 2023, he took no objection to the proposed improvements. At this time, again, I have a resolution on to classify SECRE, issue a night deck, and then approve the Chapter 219.
I don't know if you guys get down to the beach much, but a lot of these stairwells that are going down to the beach now, there's four kayaks and picnic tables and all kinds of things that are strapped to them, and I don't know, but to me, it's a little bit of an issue. I wonder if there's some way that we could restrict, restrict people from...
Can we, can we make that a condition of approval?
I don't know, maybe it doesn't bother you. Is it an issue or not? When you go down the beach, you do see a lot of, you know, people's toys on, strapped to the railings. Anybody care, or...
If it, if it's on their property, though, I mean, if it's not, if, keeping a kayak there is not considered a structure, wouldn't necessarily require a permit, so I mean, if someone's keeping their kayak for their private use on, at the bottom of their stairs on beach...
I would think that if...
If it's repairing rates, I think that's the correct word. The, the line is always moving. Right now, it's, might be out further, but I don't know if it's not an issue for him, but I just...
You're respecting, you're kind of respecting the people's use of their beach.
Well, how about everyone else that's using the beach that, you know...
I would think that if maybe they're limited to keeping them on that last landing, you know, that's their structure.
Above the bulkhead?
Rather than strewn upon the beach, but again, you know, that's up to the board.
I don't know. Does anybody care? I have no, nothing to say.
That's why they're building the decks. That's why they're doing the deck.
Yeah, but they're not going to carry, it's about a thousand steps, they're not going to carry...
They're going to leave it down there.
Because everyone else has, you know, to look at.
Study the beaches.
Huh?
You can access.
Yeah, that's why, bathers and walkers and fishers. All right, you guys are all right with it. Okay. Any other issues? No. All right, moving right along. Is each page entrance being pulled quick?
Yeah, that was, the applicant made a request, so we're going to pull that. That will be on for the April, I believe it's the April 6th meeting.
All right, do we need to take an action as far as like tailoring it, or just...
No, I mean, we, just, we, yeah, it's just, it was, it was pulled off the agenda, so it's not on for discussion.
At the applicant's request, or anything?
The applicant's request. I had forward it, I requested the board, so it's going to be on for April 6th, when we have a full board and we have legal representation.
Okay.
We'll discuss that on April 6th.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, moving right along. Dries Speckio Manufacturers Outlet Center.
So this is just, just a quick update. This is the Dries Speckio Manufacturers Outlet Center, which believe it or not has been floating around for probably close to 20 years. Has received previous approvals from the board, looking to resurrect it, so the application seeks to construct 31,000 square feet of Manufacturers Outlet Center between the Tanger 1 and Tanger 2 properties on a property owned by Dries Speckio. It's going to propose new water utility, natural gas sewer connections, lighting landscaping, and parking. It is, tech, does technically have a address of 2009 Old Country Road. Site is going to be accessed via Tanger Drive, which is the north-south drive separating Tanger 1 and 2. They are required to take access from Tanger Drive pursuant to an easement agreement between the Tanger property owners and the Dries Speckio owner, which was established to allow the build out of Tanger 2. Requires a special permit from the town board, which was granted by the town board on August 16th, 2022. The planning board did hold a public hearing on this application back in November. We do have an approval resolution, resolution on for preliminary approval in there, and the resolution, I did recite comments from the Suffolk County DPW, the Planning Commission, the New York State DEC, because it is located within the Wild Scenic Recreational Rivers. Recited comments from the Fire Marshal and the town engineer. So the approval resolution is subject to the following conditions. Prior to final site plan approval, right now, the plans show a 60-foot buffer on the south side of the property. The DEC permit called out a 65-foot buffer. I know when it was before the board last time, there was a choice of either amending the DEC permit or providing the 65-foot buffer. They have more than enough room to tweak that. I think they have a 12-foot sidewalk on the south side of the building, so they can surely make up that five feet, provide the 65...
Yeah, I think we were having a discussion about what's going to go in there, because there's an apartment complex right to the south of that.
So they did provide a landscaping plan, a native species that was approved by the DEC, part of the Wild Scenic Recreational Rivers permit. Just real quick, it consists of 10 red oak trees, 24 winged sumac, 32 red chokeberry, 14 huckleberry, 19 blue spruce. So there's a pretty nice range of native vegetation in there, and again, that'll just be supplemented to be 65 feet wide. One of the conditions, it needs to comply with the Fire Marshal and the town engineer's comments, and prior to final approval pursuant to town code, they do need to get an approved stormwater pollution prevention plan.
I got one comment.
Yes.
The last time we had them up here, and that was the water and sewer along cross. And I would like to have a detail of that shown on the drawing.
All right, so what...
So that whoever bids, bids, bids a work realizes that they've got to do that.
All right, so I'll, I'll add condition E. Plans shall be revised to show an underground utility profile in the Tanger...
Water, water and sewer crossing, just where they cross. That means they're going to get the elevations, etc.
Yeah, I mean, they should, you know, so what I would say is, the language will be, plans shall be revised to show existing underground utility profile in the crossing. That way, we know what's down there, when they jack under that road, they don't hit any pipes.
Well, that's really not, the problem is, they have to be separated when they cross.
They will need to get Health Department, isn't that something the Health Department will ultimately look at?
They'll save the section.
The Health Department will typically be a condition prior to building permit. So are we okay with just adding condition E, plans should be updated to show an underground utility profile for the crossing?
All right.
Yeah, I think we added that before.
I will add that in, and I'll just bring that up when we go to vote on the resolutions.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Yep.
Great. Good idea.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comments on resolutions.
No, we have, I'm sorry, we have the Long Island Cauliflower Association on the amended agenda.
Okay, I don't have that one, I guess. Sorry about that. Long Island Cauliflower Association, continued discussion of the site plan with Greg.
All right, so this is a follow-up to a conversation we had with the board, I believe it was either back in November or December. So this is the site plan for the Long Island Cauliflower Association property on the northwest corner of Old Country Road and Mill Road. The application's been through many revisions, initially it was a retail site, it's since been revised to, they're proposing four restaurants. One of them is identified as a Chick-fil-A with a 58, roughly 5,800 square foot building with drive-through. There is a one-story Dunkin' Donuts, approximately 1,400 square feet. As the board will recall, that was initially the Dunkin' Donuts Jimmy John's, and they proposed this sort of never-ending drive-through, like infinity loop. They've since eliminated the Jimmy John's, and now it is just the standalone Dunkin' Donuts. They adequately addressed the queuing in that site, so it's no longer going to be a congestion issue. And the two northern buildings, one is a, a one-story restaurant with a drive-through proposed at 2,600 square feet, and the northernmost building is a traditional sit-down restaurant at about 6,400 square feet with no drive-through. When this was last brought before the board, there were questions and issues that had arisen with the discussions with the Riverhead Water District. Initially, the plans were proposing to take water service off of Mill Road as a result of discussions between the Water District, Fire Marshal, and the applicant. They were told that they need to take water service off of 58. What that resulted in is the requirement to locate an RPZ enclosure along 58. So they did provide a landscaping detail, they're now proposing that RPZ enclosure along 58, and they're going to screen it with wax leaf privet. All the improvements are outside of the required highway dedication along 58. So this application has been well-reviewed. We've addressed, like I said, the issues with the Dunkin' Donuts. There were potential issues with the Chick-fil-A with backup related to their queuing. They've relocated their canopies, so they've adequately addressed potential backups at the Chick-fil-A. So really just here before the board to get their, get last, final feedbacks and try to move this thing towards approvals.
Yeah, I'm okay with everything. We beat this to death, but on the northern end of the property, I'd like you to see put up two or three more rows of evergreens.
All right, so do we have, I think, I saw Doug Adams, I don't know if Richard Israel will come?
Yeah.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
All right, so right now, the area in question is on the northern property boundary, which is on sheet three of the site plan I provided to you. Town code requires a 50-foot non-disturbance buffer when a commercial use buffer is a residential use. They do provide that 50-foot non-disturbance buffer, the entire tree canopy that's there existing is going to remain. Right now, they propose to supplement that with a row of this 33 emerald green orchid varieties, which will be planted on top of the retaining wall, and then you'll have the parking lot. I mean, they meet the requirements in the town code, they are supplementing the existing buffer, they are installing a new six-foot-high chain-link fence with the black vinyl privacy slats. I was here to get a few that...
Your neighbor had to install a sound wall. I don't think it's out of question to add another row or two of evergreens to be a good neighbor to project this big.
So that will...
Sir, just sorry to see your name spelt like that.
My name is Richard Israel, ISR AEL, and I am a consultant for the development of this property.
Well, I still have one, I still have one major problem, and that is on 58, that entrance. I really don't think it should be there, but at very best, it can only, it should only be an exit, and I can't come along with this project unless that has changed.
Well, we, you're talking about the right-in, right-out only.
Yes.
So that's what the, you know, the county originally had a, the acceleration lane, they took it out because of, that's what they wanted in their review. I think the importance of that is just as a person goes through the mill intersection heading west, if they want to, the only place they can enter is, is there. A person heading east has to go through mill and make the...
I know, but I, I'm down there quite often, coming down mill.
Right.
And to make, to make the right turn, and it's bad now. You put a restaurant with an entrance, it's going to get worse. You've got two entrances off mill, and I think that could do it for the entrances. Exit's fine.
I mean, so someone traveling west on Old Country Road on 58, to be able to, you know, for them to go into the site, they're not going to need to come to a complete stop.
It's backed up now from, um, an era, backs up constantly, and then you've got a ton of people coming in from mill. Yeah, with that light.
You know, part of that, I mean, excuse me for interrupting, but part of that is the function of the lights. I mean, I go through that all the time, and the lights are just really not timed well at all.
So that is...
We, we've discussed this, and it's never gone any...
And I know DPW, it did come up during some of the public reviews, during the, the comp plan updates. I know that DPW is going to be working on the signal timing really along the length of 58, which should help.
Yeah, because if they can move that along, you know, there's too many lights on top of one another, on your other block, there you go. Then there's another light right away, I mean, it's just, it's, it's just, you can't move the traffic.
Well, that's why they, they're, I think, trying to reduce, they can't reduce the amount of lights, but they're not trying to increase it either.
I know, but they, and I, and I get what they were trying to do, but it's unsuccessful, you know, and I can see my colleague here just doesn't want to add to the, to the problem.
Well, the, the right-in actually would reduce that because a person heading, so the, the problem we have with Route 58, as you head west, if you miss your entrance, you actually have to go almost all the way to splish splash to turn around.
That's right.
Because they don't allow it.
That's right.
So understand that any, if, if a person wants to go to Chick, and he first sees it as he's heading west, he can actually pass this and turn in.
Or go down your block, make the U-turn, so somewhere it can...
If they understood that.
Exactly. Start a walk again.
So, so understand, I, the, the biggest worry I think all of us have is a person who's heading east, who may think that they can make a left-hand turn and cross. I think because of the turning lanes and everything else that exists here, this is one of the widest places on Route 58. It's, it's, it's almost seven lanes wide, so...
Does he have two lanes going east to go north?
Correct.
There's two, two turning lanes.
There's two turning lanes for that. So that will help at least the traffic get to where it's going. I've never seen them overstacked, you know, so that, that intersection is working as far as that left-hand turn and, and the like, so it, it is an issue of a lot of things which none of us control, because it's the county, and originally, the thought was, and we had in the original plan, if we put in that third de-acceleration lane, actually, that person would get out of the way of traffic and the like, but, and understand, their traffic actually, we're not, okay? And, and they decided it's, it's wrong to do that because of what you just said, a person making a left-hand turn, excuse me, a right-hand turn, coming down mill and wanting to go west, it would interfere if that person is trying to move over. So they said, it's better that the person is in the line of traffic and actually exits. And that's how it was explained to us. And that's how it was explained to us, I believe. I mean, we're gonna give them that dedication so that they can someday widen, I guess, or create an extra lane of merge. But, you know, until they decide...
The fact that we've got a whole series of restaurants there, it's gonna, it's gotta attract a lot of traffic from fifty-eight. And that's why I'd rather see them go up Mill Road and use it to entrances that you provided.
Well, I think most local people will, will know to go up Mill Road.
I'm only one person over there.
Yeah, so...
Can I say something?
Sure.
Doug Adams, Young Associates for New York. So I'm a civil engineer, so I've got some traffic experience. The, the right turn in only is not gonna see a lot of traffic because most people coming, traveling westbound are gonna make the right at Mill Road and use the proper entrance. It's a bit of a hidden, almost like a service road behind all the buildings, so it's not really that, that busy. But it will get used, but it's really more a relief for the light to have people going west out of the property to get, to get out of the property without having to choke up the light further. I go to lunch at Panera every day, hate to admit it, but it's...
So you do that all the time?
It's what I'm doing, I know, I see you joking. But literally every day, and I've never had a problem getting, you know, turning, when you turn into a, a, a right turn in like this that's not apron, but it's a, a intersection-type entrance, you don't have to slow down very much. So you're not traveling that fast anyway on fifty-eight, so you can, you can easily turn into this if you were gonna use it. But I think that's where the traffic analysis comes in, where they felt that they wanted to lose a deceleration lane. Because of that, they didn't, they just felt they didn't need it. And that would be very confusing, merging a deceleration lane with an acceleration lane coming out of Mill Road. So I don't feel it would, it would be a problem, but...
What do you wanna add?
Good, any questions?
I think it's okay to leave it in.
Good, Josh?
I think we guys speak a little louder.
Thank you. Plus, the, I think, are we comfortable with the, I know, I understand your concerns, the rest of the board's okay with the access of Old Country Road? I would like to just get, you know, so the feedback on that northern buffer. To supplement and add additional rows of arborvitae, they would probably have to go and cut down some of the existing tree canopy. So I, I think it might, it might supplement the low vegetation and provide some additional screening, but you're gonna lose some trees. So what would the board, what would the board like to see? I mean, I do know, so fifty-one feet is the closest point of the retaining wall to the property line, you know, on that eastern side. Probably pick up a couple of extra feet on the west side of that retaining wall, so it probably goes out to about fifty-five. And then you've got an additional, probably thirty-five feet north of that property line to where the homes are in that community to the north. So you're almost at eighty-five, ninety feet from that retaining wall to those residences.
Have we heard anything from the residents themselves?
Uh, I mean, we had, we did have a public hearing on this application last year. People did come out and speak about it. I could revisit the minutes and send them back out to the board. Nothing's immediately jumping out at me as...
Nothing jumps in mind, right?
Yeah. I, I know, I know there were just concerns generally about traffic, impacts to the, the Mill Road, Riverhead Center location, which we identified. They're gonna be adding a north-down left-turning lane into the site so that it doesn't jam up. But nothing is immediately jumping to my mind of really significant feedback from those neighboring residences now. That being said, and I know you referenced the sound wall, probably at the Rixmore site. Those, they have, you know, probably a hundred thousand square feet plus of retail where you're getting significant tractor-trailer deliveries, you know, operating late at night. This is a sixty-four hundred square foot restaurant, they do have a loading area, so there would be a truck delivery.
I wasn't proposing a sound wall, I was just saying the need...
No, I know, but I just, you know, so we do have, we do have one loading dock.
I just want it to be nice, there's people that live right next door to it. I want them to be happy in their homes. I don't want headlights going in their bedroom every time a car goes through.
So, so we, right, so by having the retaining wall there, a retaining wall would be, basically stop any headlights going to the northerly direction. They'll hit the retaining wall. And by putting the arborvitae on top, it, it should, I'll say, maybe we'll take two years, but, you know, or we can put bigger plants.
Are they staggered?
But that, that will turn into a curtain wall of green. To put them four-deep, I don't think you're improving that.
Are they staggered?
Yes.
Of course.
So for reference, on the, the west, so talking about the northern bank of property stalls, on the western corner of that parking lot, bottom of curb is at thirty-one, elevation thirty-one five. Top of the wall is at thirty-four feet, so that's two and a half foot difference from bottom of curb to the top of the wall. At the eastern end, bottom curb is thirty-four point seven five, top of wall is thirty-eight. So again, that's about three point three and a quarter feet. So you put that where, you know, car headlights are maybe at about two, three feet above ground. They should be screened by the retaining wall, further supplemented by the row of arborvitae. And then tag onto that, you've got the chain-link fence with the black privacy slats.
I was gonna say, it's privacy slats, yeah.
And that's about a foot and a half above the retaining wall. It's, you know, it's back, it's fifty feet back, so it's...
Satisfied with it, Greg? I, I mean, it meets the code, I believe they have provided, provided additional landscaping, provided the fencing. Anything tall or anything more substantial after the planning board, after we approved the, and I'm not saying sound wall, but behind the stop-and-shop, they put up fifteen-foot sound wall, obviously for different purposes. But I've gotten calls since then that they basically feel like they're living in a prison looking at a wall. Not that we were gonna consider putting up a fifteen-foot wall, but even any kind of solid structure, you know, kinda just blocks that out.
Okay. Guys, good?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Alright, with that being said, our discussion items are done. Let's move into public comments on resolutions, please.
You have to do it at the microphone here.
On resolutions, correct?
Whatever you were just discussing here, I didn't, it was a full resolution.
Resolution.
So it's after the resolution.
Yeah.
Alright, so you have to do something before I make a comment.
So there'll be comments on resolutions first, and then there'll be the resolutions and the public comments.
John McCullough from Ruin Oak Landing in Riverhead. I'm actually here because of the resolution, you pulled the HK resolution. And I'm not gonna say much about it, except to note that we have just passed the one-year anniversary of the war in Ukraine, in which Russian bombs and Russian missiles are killing people every day, and the US is doing everything it can to stop that. I think you have to take a serious look at the ownership of HK. You have a month to do it, you need to investigate the news stories that the principal is, represents the Russian mafia, that he helps to funnel Russian mafia money into investment projects. And I don't know, I only know what was in the news review about that, but I think that's enough to motivate a serious investigation on your part, and also an investigation on what money is actually behind the HK Ventures project. I would also simply say in passing, as a person who lives near Sound Avenue, that I hope that you do not essentially reward the cider mill people for their past indiscretions and illegalities and allow them to expand further their project.
Right, just a point, John. Our job as a planning board is subdivision and site plan. We do not do FBI background checks or police checks, subdivision and site plan.
I understand that, but who does do that? Who does take responsibility for the town and its role in the larger society of town? We've had the same discussion, and you probably will do it again in a month, but I think someone in the town of Riverhead needs to look at the larger questions. And if it's not you, it's the town board. But I think you can't just walk by those issues saying that it's not within your purview.
Good evening, Mike Foley, Reeves Park, speaking in favor of Resolution Number Two, calling for a public hearing on the cider house expansion. I came when the original public hearing was scheduled a month ago. And unfortunately, the applicant didn't follow the rules on having that public hearing, which is not a surprise to anybody that knows the owner, because he doesn't believe in rules for himself or anything. But at that time, I mentioned a, on their website, the cider house website, a page calling for events. And I was struggling to find that last month, but I found it since then. And one of the, one of the bars on it is that it is a great space for events such as wedding, bridal showers, launch parties, corporate events, graduations, birthdays, and any other celebratory events. Shortly after I mentioned this, the owner took the website event page down. So it wasn't obvious anymore to the public looking at the website that in fact he did wanna become a catering hall. And certainly, the fact that he took the website, the page down, didn't negate his intention at all. It was advertised, it's out there in cider space, we have it, whether he took it down or not, it was there. And that showed his intentions. A couple of days ago, a concerned resident sent me a video of a wedding being held at the cider house. It was about a minute and a half video, that, by the way, I sent an email to Eric Howard and to Jefferson Murphy, and I asked Jeff to forward that video to the planning board. Did you guys get it?
Yes, yeah.
Wonderful. So I won't describe it in too much detail, except to state that not only did it encompass his entire bar, but they moved the video into the illegal fifty-one hundred fifty square foot catering hall that he has already constructed. So it kinda just shows the arrogance of this owner. And the fact that about a year before this hearing came up, the Beating Hollow Farm Vineyard put in an application to build a six thousand square foot, what they called a tasting room. But in discussions with the applicant in the public hearing on that, the owner was honest and said that he would not rule out weddings, which means he was definitely planning for weddings. Certainly, the planning board voted against that, we're thankful for that. Like the cider house, the Beating Hollow Farm Vineyard sits on, on the historic Sound Avenue corridor. And we stopped that from happening to the extent that the applicant, after seeing the level of dissension of the community, never appealed it. He just dropped it. So he's gone back to his core business, which he does, it's obvious to me he does it well. Are there problems with it? Yeah, but the problems are known and limited because we have an owner that is kind of responsive. This owner is not. This owner is a repeat offender. This owner, rather than asking for permission, asks for forgiveness. And we have right now a situation where if this stands, if this space is allowed to, to stand, even if you turn, and I anticipate you turning down this application, to not insist that that fifty-one hundred fifty square foot catering space be restored to what it was before he put it in there is a dereliction of duty, because it is clear, no matter what you say, he's gonna do whatever the hell he wants to do. There were members on that, on that planning board that were here and voted for the covenants in two thousand and fifteen that this man swore to. There are many of those covenants, that he has thumbed his nose at the community and at you. So I anticipate when this public hearing takes place, that this hall will be filled with outraged people. And I hope the sense of outrage that you feel from here is reflected not only in your vote no, but in the outrage that they thumbed their nose at you also. And if we let them get away from it, it is just gonna be Wild West here. We can't allow it as a community. We trust you to support our community and to protect it, and I thank you, and I'll see you in a month.
George, could you hold up one second, please? We're gonna have a resolution off the floor, which I failed to mention earlier, so I'm gonna mention it now. It's, can you speak about it, or Greg?
Uh, sure.
Central Square, Weeding River, I'm sorry I didn't mention it earlier, but if anybody has comments, we'll take them.
Sure, it's just, it's a resolution to annul a cross-access easement on a commercial development down in Weeding River where the remaining development rights are being sold to the Conic Land Trust. And it's just to facilitate that transfer. So in order for that to be finalized, that cross-access easement has to be annulled. But the, the remaining covenants, including the open space scenic area, will remain in place.
Thank you. Anybody has comments on that, feel free to come up.
Really is not directly connected to a public hearing tonight, but this is, this is something you might wanna take a look at. Now, it's covered very briefly.
Yep, George, we know who you are, but they need it for the record.
Can you repeat what you said?
My name is George Bartnik, live on Silver Beach Lane in Beating Hollow. And I just wanna hand out something to you very quickly here. I also am in support of the, the public hearing for the cider house. And I just wanna have a little clarification, my wife and I went there a couple of weeks ago. And it, we had a lot of fun, had a drink, had some pizza. And it was nice going into an activity where a lot of people had color in their hair still. What I'm gonna read here is a statement, and I, I got involved in this after two thousand and seventeen, as a matter of fact, after, after it was a fact. And I started asking myself, basically, how it, how it ever happened, the development of the, the cider house. And I got a response from somebody who was a, a former town board person, who was on the town board at the time. And I, I'd just like to read what this person said. "I've been fighting this since two thousand and fourteen," I think you'll probably figure out who it came from. "When they got the approval for the ZBA permit, food processing accessory to the warehouse, which in my opinion never should have been approved, the Long Island Farm Bureau got a grant from the state and they landed the grant here, the cider house. The farmers wanted King to take their produce, clean barcode, and put the, put it out to marketplace. Austin Warner challenged his ZBA decision and lost the case and a lot of money. For reasons unknown, the plan did not work out for the farmers, so King came in and wanted to do cider tasting as accessory food processing. Bill Duffy, at the time, I asked, said they couldn't do it. They got a letter from the planning director, a copy of which I have, and said that they could do cider tasting as accessory to food processing. They were processing it as a change of use when I demanded it go to site plan approval for the public hearing, which it did. The public came out and they were told conditions would be put in place to address their concerns, and the site plan was approved. The covenant calls for no extension of the public assembly, assembly area. They already put in a patio in the east building, which when I was told, the building inspector was not on the site, was not on the site plan, and he made it take him out. There were other covenants and conditions recorded, which I'm sure will be unenforceable with the lack of code enforcement on the weekends. They opened without a CO for two weeks in a row. I demand the building inspector issue violations for opening without a CO and putting in two pizza ovens, which were not on the plans, instead they got a temporary CO. Cars are lined up to get out of the parking area, lot lined up onto Sound Avenue. Last comment, bars and restaurants are not permitted on Sound Avenue. This application for the zoning code on this property is wrong and contributes to the abomination of Sound Avenue. The property may be in the APZ, Agricultural Protection, Protection Zone, but it's not growing anything. The bar and restaurant on Sound Avenue is contrary to the intent of the APZ zoning district." And I will have more comments when we actually do have the public hearing. The handout that I gave you, and, and I think this is kind of important, it is relevant to what, some of the, some of the things that are, are being approached on, on Sound Avenue. There are actually two different... There are actually two different definitions for agricultural production in the town code, and I think that should be resolved, it should be won. And a suggestion definition, now I found this on the internet, so I'm not going to take credit for coming up with this, but I think it's pretty darn good. And it kind of incorporates both the one, the definition that you find in Section 201 and also in 301. And I also sent this message to Mr. Howard today, and I think it should be something that could be put into 301, which is the new code for reviewing farm stands. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I just want to encourage members of the public to, if they have concerns, to ensure that they do come to the public hearing when this will become an official part of the record. I'm not trying to stifle anybody's comments tonight, these will be part of this meeting, but if you have specific questions related to the cider house application, please do come to the public hearing and please, which is, will be scheduled for April, I think it's April, the first meeting in April?
April 6th.
April 6th, yes. And some comments to write in too, if they so choose.
Otherwise, it's not part of the public record on the application.
Hello, my name is Carrie Walsh. I'm a resident of Calverton, and I just want to clarify, because this gentleman made it sound like we've already decided that there is going to be a public hearing. My understanding is that we're here to decide that, and I just want to add my voice to supporting that there is a public hearing, and that we please be clear about these things, so that everybody...
There is a vote coming up this evening, it is on our agenda.
Yes, but it's not official that it has been voted on yet.
Has not been voted on yet, right?
This gentleman made it sound like it was, so I just want to add my voice in support that we vote that there's a hearing. Thank you.
Say your last name, ma'am.
Walsh. W-A-L-S-H.
Thanks.
Mark Gajowski, Calverton. I just had a question on the line.
First, first, your last name, please.
Mark Gajowski, G-A-J-O-W-S-K-I, Calverton. I had a question on the Long Island Cauliflower Association project. I heard a lot of talk, and I apologize, I came in maybe a little late through this. A lot of intersection talk about 58 and Mill, but I live in Calverton, and it's Mill and Middle Road that's really the problem. Is there any addressing to what is going to be the rollover traffic that is more than likely going to back up from all this traffic that's going to flow over on 58? It's going to be spillover, right? So Middle Road's already a bit of a train wreck, and I know this is peripheral to several other projects, the logistics slash warehouse center that is promised down that road and all these other things. You know, for all of us residents that live in that area, it's a bit of a problem to get out of your own community sometimes. So it's all well and good that that project is moving forward, and you know, protecting the neighbors that live in that, you know, community and mill is clearly an important thing. What about the intersections? Because all those people are going to get all the overflow from 58. I grew up in this town, so we've always taken all the side roads to circumvent it. I'm sure we're not the only ones that have ways and GPS. So can that be addressed before that gets approved and finalized? Because I'm surprised it gets this far and no one's thought about that. That's just a little disheartening, in my opinion.
I think it's a good point, but I don't think anybody looked at that intersection.
Being a volunteer fireman, we always joke that when you roll up to a house fire, most people look at the fire, but the reality is you're supposed to be looking at the smoke and the exposures. So maybe to make a good analogy, this is the smoke and the exposure. Everybody can look at the obvious one is, you know, we'll have to slow down before we make a quick right turn into that community. It took me almost 15 minutes to get to Commerce Drive from my house on Toomey Avenue, making that right through two lights, and then that right turn to wait seven deep in Commerce, you know, drive to make a right into Commerce. And that was before the 5:00 rush hour.
Was that it? Intersection?
No. So when the board, we had a traffic impact study done, the immediate study intersection was obviously the Mill Road, 58 and Mill Road, and the Riverhead Center intersection. Never came up, I mean, we've been reviewing this application now for, you know, probably two years, the Mill Road and Middle Road intersection didn't come up. I mean, it kind of, speaking like anecdotally, but if someone's going to go to a fast food restaurant, if they're going to be traveling down Mill Road, they're going to be traveling down Mill Road anyway, whether it's to get to Chick-fil-A, or they're going to go down Mill Road to 58 to go to Wendy's or Taco Bell. So I mean, the board, throughout dependency of this review, Mill Road and Middle Road wasn't brought up as a significant concern. The thought process was likely that overwhelming majority of this traffic would probably be coming from 58. I can't speak for the board, the board has any other feedback on that, but again, you know, there were mitigation measures that were proposed at Mill Road and Riverhead Center intersection, like I said, adding the left turning lane. I mean, short of, you know, signaling every intersection along Middle Road, again, didn't come up, was never raised by a concern by the board, wasn't raised at a public hearing.
Yeah, I know the town has a traffic committee. Maybe you should suggest have that intersection studied, just present that to the board and see if the traffic committee can take a look at it.
It's a four-way stop, right?
Yeah, it's a four-way.
Yeah, it's a four-way train wreck, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cindy Clifford, and I could be spending the evening having dinner with my grandniece, but I wanted to come here because there is so often some lack of common sense, or just the assurance that common sense is being applied. I just want to say to Mr. Berman that the idea there'd be a traffic study and they wouldn't look at the greater scope is a puzzlement. But anyway, that's not what I came up here for, was to say, I am absolutely in support of your having a public hearing regarding the cider house. I keep thinking about analogies that just boil it down to the most fundamental common sense. If your kids are jumping on the furniture, and you say, "Don't jump on the furniture", and then they jump on the furniture, and you go, "Oh, well," then all the other kids jump on the furniture and you don't have a leg to stand on. So I'm looking forward to a public hearing, so we can all heartily express our concerns and our opposition to, you know, how this is moving ahead and what has become. Granted, the cider house is a successful business, and I don't fault them for that, but I think that if you don't play by the rules, then there should be, you know, go to your room. So, thank you.
Hi, Amanda Graham, Rees Park. I too saw the video of cider house, the wedding, and I'm surprised it wasn't shown here tonight. We've been looking at these blue spheres, but anyway. It dawned on me that how the heck do you feed 150 people at a wedding in there? How'd they do it? Do they already have operations? Do they already bring in the food ready to? I mean, you're talking the whole big blown wedding. So where's that going to come from? That's number one. And number two, where do you put 150 people and their cars? Where the heck is that going to go? I don't want to be made a fool of. I was here back in the days arguing over Bating Hollow. I don't want to be made a fool of again, and I'm sure you guys don't. So please, don't let him do it. He's a catch-me-if-you-can kind of guy. Board up the wall, that's it. And if he does it, then everybody else is going to do it. Every other venue's going to add an extension, every other venue's going to have a venue. I don't know how you feed 150 people and park them and say you're not having huge events there. God bless Sound Avenue.
Good evening, Tawke Church and Greater Calverton Civic Association President. Thank goodness this is in the evening. I like to bring it, thanks to you when I can, and I'm appreciative that it's at this time of the evening. The folks are showing up, and they're telling you how they feel. I'd like to say that as a civic, we'd like to support businesses within our hamlet and within Riverhead to the best of our ability, because some of us are business owners, small business owners, and it's important to us as a civic. So I know I come up here and I do say to you, "Hey, would you take a look at this? Hey, this isn't fair. Hey, this person isn't following this procedure." But I also want you to hear it from us through me, that we support our businesses in town. We want to do everything possible that's legal to do to help them. Saying that, I don't feel the same way for the cider house, and it's been evidenced tonight, and I think that if you do choose to throw a public hearing, that you will hear more and more of that. I'm mixed on the idea of not having one or having one. It's always a good idea to have a public hearing. Is it a good idea to continue to give a violator a public hearing and to spend our precious time coming and speaking before this board when they're following the procedures, right? Our folks are following procedures and sacrificing. What's this applicant sacrificing? Thank you.
My name's Barbara Ripple, and I'm a very recent mover to Calverton. And I moved off the North Fork. Anybody who wants to think that they're controlling things, count the blue signs that are all along there and all the takeover. But I grew up in Stony Brook. I grew up in a place where I could run around and walk to town and do all kinds of free things as a kid should be able to do. I don't know if you've been to Stony Brook lately, but they built this small cozy little college in practically my backyard. It is now a totally huge university, which I am grateful for, because I have two degrees from there. But if you want to plan, remember, you're planning for the people who live here, and we need to have some kind of control and prospectus. So why would you not have public hearings for all of these issues? I don't understand it. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Okay, let's move on to Resolution, gentlemen.
Okay, I'll move Resolution Number 14, which classifies the secret and assumes the agency for Chapter 219 of the Popovich property.
I'll second.
Moved in second, now we have a vote. Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
And I vote aye.
I'll move Resolution 2023-015 for the Riverhead Cider House penny-on-tasting-room expansion to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
And I vote aye.
I'll move 2023-016 for 2878 North Waiting River Road for Chapter 219 to approve the staircase and the other improvements, so move.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
And I vote aye.
Before we get to Resolution 17, I would just offer the amendment that we discussed, that the preliminary approval granted herein is subject to the following conditions. I'm going to add Letter E. Plan shall be revised to show the underground utility profile for the driveway between Hangar 1 and 2.
Thank you. I'll move Resolution Number 17, plans preliminary approval.
As amended.
As amended. Preliminary approval for manufacturer's outlet, San Francisco.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
And I vote aye. So that's 341 opposed.
Don't forget the last one, please.
Yeah, somebody want to move Resolution 18?
I don't find it.
It was the add-on, that's my.
Central Square.
Yeah, I'll move Resolution 2023-18 with the Central Square, Waiting River, the Zuma S. canceling and annuls removal of the covenant of record.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
And I vote aye. Public comments on all matters. Step up, please.
To the members of this board, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you all on behalf of the residents of Calverton and Bating Hollow for your continued efforts to mitigate the potential damage done by massive industrial projects being proposed for our hamlet. The developer of the proposed Riverhead Logistics Center on Middle Road is calling a 641,000 square foot building a high cube warehouse, even though by its description and very own name is not. The town's traffic consultant, L.K. McLean Associates, is using an inaccurate land use code to estimate, or underestimate, the round-the-clock truck traffic that will undoubtedly occur, and the town board is changing land use codes to allow for items like battery energy storage systems not currently in our comprehensive plan without even knowing the ramifications. Recently, they even voted against holding a public hearing on your recommendation for a moratorium. It would seem that the deck is stacked against us, but we will not be deterred in our effort to keep our rural hamlet an agricultural and family-friendly destination, despite the developers' games and misrepresentations by interested parties. I urge this board to get all the facts, answer all the questions, dig deep, and do your due diligence to get to the truth, and include the public when meeting with the company hired to update the comp plan, BFJ Planning, and schedule a meeting in the evening when residents can easily attend and be heard. Although the town board has ignored us, we applaud you for trying to determine an accurate assessment before irreversible damage is done to our hamlet. Thank you.
Thanks.
Nobody else? Okay, let's move the minute to the meeting, guys.
So moved.
It's February 2nd.
Moved in second, Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. O'Day?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you, planning staff, you guys did a really good job tonight. Thank you. Our next meeting is going to be on March 16th at 3:00 in the afternoon. Thank you very much, and have a good weekend, everybody. Post your votes.
Post your votes.
Move favor?
Aye.